We came to order, we have a forum, and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Let's stand for the pleasurable regents. Pleasurable regents.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're fine.
Okay, number five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of December 3rd, 2018. Any comments, corrections, or additions?
Motion to approve the minutes.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion and second to, sorry, motion and second to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Number six, unfinished business, discuss and consider ordinance 07-2018, ordinance to update chapter 224, parent F, overhang of street trees. Sean, JJ?
Well, this is the, you should have a copy of the proposed ordinance in your packet. This is the one where we have, any tree limbs cannot project over and be less than 14 feet above a public street. It had been 10, so we made that revision, and it's fairly simple.
Right. Okay. Any questions, comments? If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve ordinance 07-2018 to chapter 224, parent F, regarding overhang of street trees. Any other discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Seven, new business, item A, discuss and consider new operator's license for July 2018 to June 2019 for Molly McLeed. Did I pronounce that right, I hope? Any problems with this individual, chief?
No.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to approve the operator's license for Molly.
Okay. Motion and second to approve operator's license for July 2018 to June 2019 for Molly McLeed. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Number eight, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First, we have community development authority.
So, we met on December 10th, had a presentation by Gray Wolf Parkers regarding the Northlands, which is the property north of I-94, concept as far as potential, what that could look like, discuss, looking at potentially a study. The committee discussed that and recommended that we do do that going forward. We also then had an overview of the Mid-Atlantic Economic Development Council, previous conference, Aaron attended, provided a good summary of that, and that was pretty much it. I don't know if there's anything else in there?
Okay, thank you. All right, eight, parent two, plan commission. Item A, discuss and consider request from Anona Grove Development, Inc., Shady Grove LLC, to rezone the parcels in the Shady Grove subdivision with lots 1 to 6, and 34 to be TR8, lot 7 to be MR12, and lots 8 to 33, and 35 to 69 to be SR4, and outlots 1 to 5 to be park and open space. We have Robert Proctor here representing the developer who has to speak, so I'll let him go first, and several other people registering to speak, and I'll have them go following Robert.
Good evening. And I'm Robert Proctor, I'm the attorney for Shady Grove. We're in front of you tonight for the rezones, we went to the planning commission and received a six to one vote in favor of rezoning with certain conditions, and we've been working on those conditions and trying to reach a consensus with most people on how we're going to go forward with it. So, we'll go through some of the easier parts right now, is, I'm going to have to help you. So, this is the, what was going to be the large multifamily property that there's a lot of people concerned about, so we had agreed to, as a condition, to remove that from the rezoning, so that people could look at it and say, and wait to rezone it until there was an actual project that somebody could look at, you know, because it's hard for people to look at it and say, I don't know what that really means, you know, what is 12 units, what is 24 units, or could that be commercial or something else. And so, since we don't have a project for it right now, the point was to take it off. So, these duplexes, here, all right, so here, 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 here would be, they were originally planned as duplexes, but again, we don't have a product for these, or for these here, or this one. So, we agreed to take all those off, because they were originally looked at as multifamily, and to kind of give you where we've been on it, we, I think most people who have talked to us about it would prefer an owner occupied product, and we have some in mind. We've had, I think, the second most number of people tell us they want to see it commercial, and then we've had some people stress that they would like multifamily. I did pull the records, I don't think there's been a duplex built in Cottage Grove in years, you know, so.
Been a while.
It's been a while. You can go to CARPSY, and they have all the records online. But so, we pulled all of those out of the zoning and said, you know what, fair enough, we'll come back when we actually have a product, so people can see it, so maybe the people who want commercial say, no, that's good as multifamily, or the people who want multifamily say, no, that owner occupied product is good. We do believe we have a good owner occupied product that's possible for these two, and these, and maybe even these, but we just, until we have a builder who wants to do it, we'll save on that. The, the one, another issue that's always been an issue is the park, we just don't know what to do with that. That's been an important issue to many of the neighboring subdivision members, but we took our directions from the park committee, so, you know, we can't do both. We can either do the pocket park with the fee in lieu, or the actual dedicate land for a park, and we followed, to this point, the recommendation of the park committee. The, the big issue, I believe, on, becomes bus road, whether it goes through or not, and with these trees here. So, a lot of the issue was about saving the trees, and in the, in the conditions, covenants, and restrictions for the property, we spent a lot of time, that's when Mick Conrad was on the board, spent a lot of time going through and creating a system where, in order to remove trees outside of the foundation areas and the right-of-way, that a person would have to come to the village and basically get approval to remove the trees. And a very, very strict, as strict as been in the village, provision for maintaining those. So, and I, I think we did, it's a very good plan. So, the, the last issue is a condition of the rezoning from the planning commission was to connect bus road through closer to what's on the comp plan as opposed to using fundamental road. And that's, and so, we've tried to start doing some engineering, and so, one issue on roads, I mean, we all think it's easy to draw roads, and a lot of what I'm going to talk about, I'm going to regurgitate to you, because I have a law degree and a poly side degree, I'm not an engineer, a traffic engineer, and so, it starts, we started recreating how this happened, and how it turned out this way in the first place. And so, what you start happening is originally on the comp, the, this road, bus road going through, was drawn partially to go through the graveyard, that's how it's shown in the plan, and partially on the neighboring property. The neighboring property to the west made clear from the beginning that he didn't want any part of the road on his property, and so, we're fine with moving it off the property. This area right here is a tough grade, so it's easier to go through. We could easily go through it, we could take the road straight up this way, the grating's work, it doesn't work as well for us as from an engineering, but it can be done. On the comp plan, it shows it swinging around the woods, but it shows it as a 100-foot right-of-way. And so, you start throwing in the 100-foot right-of-way, so, remember, the road right-of-way is going to be a lot wider than the street. So, we're happy to move it out this way, to try to save trees, but you're going to take out a ton of trees no matter when you put the road in, because the right-of-way is so wide at 100 feet with the grading, and it, and where you grade out to 100 feet, it's not like you're going to just stop, you know, the trees right at the 100-foot are going to start surviving easily. So, what happens is you keep start pushing it out if you really want to save the trees, and then if you really want to go all the way around and save the trees, all of a sudden, you're just short of fundamental road, you know, and that's fine. And then you have this problem where the road now is coming right through, you're going to want the property owner to the south to eventually let you connect through, and so, you know, when you leave it kind of here in the middle, you kind of now are going to, what, bisect his property to connect bus road, or are you going to swing it back, and it's, you know, it talks about, people talk about a thoroughfare. We're fine, like, again, we've really struggled with this, I actually think this is the best layout, we're fine putting bus road up the lot line, take out probably all the trees, fine putting it somewhere in between, take out a lot of the trees, and then maybe swing it back, here, the guy to the south will be able to swing it back to connect it through, or you can swing it and recreate it over here. So, we're going to, so that's what we've been working on, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's kind of a direction from you all as to where you want it. And so, since when we started drawing it on there and realized even if we put it out here, that we were going to take out, because of the 100 feet right-of-way, so many trees, that we were like, let's drop.
I'm dropping that down a little bit, so we.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, so if we swing it out to here, right around here, the 100 feet right-of-way, and then the road come, would kind of be right in here, we're going to take out so many trees, that, you know, we want to be able to actually draw it for real a little bit for you, so it's not, because we don't want to try to promise something and not deliver on it. So, we'll, we, we wanted to talk through that issue with you tonight, and then come back and draw, so you kind of see, we'll superimpose the trees down, and you can see, but the choices really are up here, through the middle, you know, coming out through the middle, or just, or really fundamental, you know. Fundamental is the easiest way to save the trees, most trees, but it's, you know, it's, we'll do, the best for interconnectivity would probably be to come right up the lot line, you know, and it would devast, it would take out the trees, but come up the lot line, I'm sure that the next property would rather have it on the side. Going through the middle, you know, kind of splitting the baby a little bit, it'll, we can make it work, if that's what the board prefers. So, we're happy to answer any other questions, but otherwise, we would say, since the condition is to take bus road through, I think we, we're going to need to come back and show you the different versions of bus road that could go through, so it, so you can see how it affects the trees, even though, I mean, so.
So, you could basically have something showing all three options?
Yep.
Okay.
What, the land, just, just to the upside of the park, what is that, the ground, the ground space?
This right here, is that, huh?
Yeah, yeah. What is, what is that?
That's stormwater detention.
Who maintains that?
The homeowners association.
Okay.
So, it will be green space, basically, right? I mean, it will be, it'll be green space with a stormwater pond in it of some type.
Two basins.
Two basins, and so.
There's actually another outlot, too, that will be a pond station.
Okay.
That'll be carved out of that.
When you say pond, it's like, only when it, it is right?
Yes, yeah, there will, yeah.
Water there all the time?
I believe there's an infiltration basin, and then there'll be a semi-wet pond, where there'll be some standing water, but it won't be deep, and the infiltration is water quality, and then the, the other pond will be pour overflow.
So, when you get the, like, 15 inches that Madison got?
Yes, yes.
That's what goes into that pond, so.
All right, so, in order to present all the information, would it be reasonable to table it then?
Yeah, that's right, I mean, because we, it, we were hoping to come tonight and have a better, yes, yes.
All right, any comments, questions from board members?
How about from a number?
That's okay.
Will your three options potentially affect the number of lots, or the size of lots?
They may.
Yeah.
When you start getting into redesigning, and you start redesigning like circulation and access, it could very well affect the overall number of lots and the size of them.
So, it's not just the street we're looking at, it's also potentially?
No, we, we will be coming back with an amended plan at some point, but, I mean, our point of this is, we've been here a lot, and, you know, like, we've asked about what road, you know, so, what we really need is some direction, and some direction that we feel we can rely on. It's talking about $50,000 in engineering to redo the whole plan, so.
Okay.
The goal, of course, would be to maintain as much of consistency as we possibly can, you know, in that same, same direction, but there will be impacts, for sure.
Yeah, the planning commission's recommendation was that bus road be redrawn to go through, and that they would recommend rezoning to allow for up to 61 single-family, which is on there, so if there's, there's less, that would be fine, but not more. And then to agree, then to have the, what we call the multifamily lots, but they could be commercial taken off, not rezoned at this point, to stay in there, transitional zoning until we have projects come forward on them.
As far as interconnectivity, you'd be able to consult with Mike from MSA regarding the traffic flow, and I mean, that's.
Absolutely.
You got three options, you got three different scenarios.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We would look to him to provide that technical direction from the village.
Can you explain what you mean by owner occupied, multifamily?
Well.
The townhouses, or?
Probably, the, the product I'm thinking of, you can see it in Sutton Prairie, they're, they're kind of side-by-side four-unit condos, that they, they kind of, one will be forward, one back, one forward, one back, they're, they're a nice product, they can usually allow for ownership under $300,000, which is really hard to do today, and so, and, but we show it to you, I, I don't want to oversell it, but I mean, when people have asked us to look for some sort of owner occupied, that's the most likely scenario, it's the only product I've seen out there selling, as opposed to, you know, and it's a nice product.
There's one kind of on Nightingale, I think that is, it's four units, that sounds like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Proctor?
You know, I, I think bus road is just one of the issues here, though, in fact, development really doesn't follow the company, has a plan, as far as the woods are concerned, park space, transportation, never be solved with bus roads being at, being everywhere. I think it's great that you're willing to go back and relook at the entire design, you know, a couple things, multifamily, get it off Cottage Grove, move it to the back, the development, or turn that into a retail space underneath, and apartment above, like 1855, a nice-looking building, not something that's going to look like driving to other communities when they're 15, 20 years old, dilapidated. If you move bus road to the east, to totally avoid the woods, solves two problems, you turn the woods into a park, and you still have the main thoroughfare, so that kids and citizens are safe as they go into the park. And I would suggest lower density. I, I have a hard time believing that someone's going to buy a lot that's a quarter acre, and have a half million dollar profit when they're done. We don't have that presently in the village, and I don't believe that'll be the case once it's done either.
I don't think you have it in the village, because you've been pulling about 15 to 18 permits a year, building permits, and having added development. I can show you, and I can bring in plats from all over, the Wanakee, where the parade of home plats are, those are 10,000 to 12,000 square foot lots. Shorewood Hills, in Shorewood, has lots from 5,000 to 9,000 square feet, that are going from 600 to 900,000 dollars, depending on it. Stoner Prairie, that just went into Pittsburgh, their lots are the same kind of subdivision as this, 10,000 to 13,000, depending on where you are on them. All people I work for are all selling, all for the school district, same as this. And, you know, as to the issues, you know, you bring up commercial, I mean, the loud, resounding thing we've heard a lot about is they didn't want the commercial for the traffic, same thing as the multifamily. So, we're happy to do commercial, if there is a consensus on commercial. As to the swinging out and trying to turn the woods into a park, you swing that road out, and now you've basically cut the park off from everybody who lives there, and you're going to try to come into the park from over here, and you can look at it, and then talk to the park commission again, we would talk, we would, you know, go back to the park commission. But when I started hearing that, I started hearing again, it's like, everybody wants something different, you know, and at some point, we can't do what every single person wants. You know, we're, we're kind of come as close to the comp plan as we can by preserving it. I mean, when the, when they draw all the roads on the comp plan, it's not like you draw a comp plan and you engineered all the streets. So, of course, they put the street in, they say, well, we'd love to retain, to retain woods, and we'd love the street to go right there. But sometimes, both of them can't be done, or they both can't be done well. So, we will swing the road out, but it will, if you really want it to go around, instead of going like this, it's just going to come like this, you know, it's not really that much different, you know, than it is. So, and I was saying the trees, so we'll show you that, and we'll swing it all the way out, and it will look suspiciously like fundamental road at the end, but it's okay, it'll just come out this way, you know, so, happy to do that.
Any other question?
Got as much questions or comments, so, so this project has been going on for the better part of probably 18 months, the best I can tell. I've heard, you know, pressures on schools, which I think the constituency and all the communities voted, you know, passed the referendum, so that's off the list. We mentioned parks, we can certainly stick to the comp plan and continue to build all these large parks in neighborhoods, that's the thing with the Parks and Rec director, and take a direction from the Parks committee that take these in lieu of, and, and really, it'd be up to the developer, whether they are able to sell with a smaller park, smaller sized lots, you know, some people have heard them as different size-shaped lots. Rather than asking the developer to go back to the drawing board and circle scratch, maybe we can have like a public hearing, not in, you know, formal setting where you're, but just like a, a listening session, so we can get some consensus from people that might be opposed to this, whether they're in the audience or at the table, and, I just get the feeling that we keep asking the developer to go back for something that, we're chasing something that we might not ever get to. So, if we can have a meeting before they continue to put money into architecture, engineering, legal fees, things of that nature, let's just have a meeting and figure out what everyone can agree on. Because it seems like we keep spinning our wheels over the better part of the last year and a half, they're continuing to pour money in here, and what does that say to the other future developers? You know, at the end of the day, I mean, rooftops equal business, and we want commercial development. We talked about how many building permits, I think, last week at the planning commission meeting, as well as, I think, Mr. Proctor mentioned it tonight, 15 to 18 over the last couple of years. So, I believe the demand's there, but, I mean, I, I agree fully that we want to get it right, and we don't want to get it right just for 2019, we want to get it right for the next 15, 20, 30 years. So, rather than have them go back, do some redesign for whatever $50,000 it may be, let's just, you know, ask the citizens, the board members, let's just pick a date and come on in and have a discussion with or without lawyers, I mean, whoever wants to pay the legal fees, but let's just have a discussion on what makes the most sense for the community at the, at the time, before we ask them to come back and, you know, have three different renditions of what it might look like at the end of the day. You know, address the woods, address bus road, we talked about, you know, bus road going straight through, well, I don't think it can go straight through without preserving most of the woods. I've heard, you know, between last week, the planning commission meeting, as well as some other concerns, mainly from town residents, that increased traffic on Vilas Road, well, if the whole goal is to get bus road towards Vilas Road, I don't think we can get it to Vilas Road and promise a decrease or maintaining the level of traffic. You know, I heard some comments about maximizing profits. If you're a developer and you're not trying to maximize profits, you're probably in the wrong business. So, I think the biggest concern I have is the actual intersection on bus road, if it does go through into the development, in Cottage Grove Road, and this subdivision is, is one element of it, the other one's obviously when the school gets built over there, what's that going to look like, who's going to be paying for that, and, you know, it's really the safety there for me, and obviously taking everyone's concerns, that's not only in the audience, but the trustees here. Let's maybe have a meeting before we ask them to go back to the drawing board, have three different renditions presented in the future.
Good.
One, one issue on the parks, we, we don't get to decide whether we do a fee in lieu of in a small park, or a five acre park, that, we do what we're told, the planning, the Parks Commission told us that, if the Park Commission says, put in a five acre lot, park, which I think is the size, then we put in a five, that we have to. So, I don't, you know, it's, we take our marching orders from you all on that, so.
Right, what you're showing up there is what the Parks Commission, the committee.
Yeah, we can tell people our preference.
Yeah, well, what do you think is going to be more popular with people buying it, buying a lot in here? What do you think would the neighbor, I mean, you've got, you've got to sell this, right? You've got to sell this to people who are going to pay $100,000 for these lots, or whatever they end up paying. What, what do you think is desirable?
I think if you ask anybody, just generically, what they would prefer, a five acre lot or a pocket park, lot, parks, excuse me, they would take the big one. At, at the end of the day, with the playgrounds in there, we don't see it as an impediment to sales. You know, if you had two sitting next to each other subdivisions, and one had the five acre, and one didn't, of course, you would prefer the five acre amenity.
Yeah.
But I don't think it will stop us. The issue is, that park gets dedicated to the village, and then the village pays for its upkeep and taking care of it. So, it's really a village question about whether it wants to take care of it.
Yeah.
And we will do either, obviously. Just on the permit issues, just to kind of think about growth, I had the numbers pulled by, you know, the MLS, so, the, the three biggest single-family sales years, just to give you an idea of the market, were 2004, 5, and 6 originally, and they sold about 7,600, 7,900, and 7,300 homes. The years 2000, or, the years in 2015, 14, 15, and 16, they sold 7,900, 8,000, and 8,000. So, 2014, 15, and 16 were literally bigger than the bubble years, right before the crash. Well, in 2004, Cottage Grove pulled 120 building permits for new homes, 2005, 122, and 2006, 61. So, during the three years that have actually been a lot better than the pre-recession years, you pulled 23 building permits, 14 building permits, and 17 building permits, to give you an idea about why we believe there's such a demand. And, and we know it, we've already talked to a lot of builders, we, we'll sell this out in four, three to four years, it'll be built out, probably four years if you talk about the winters, too.
Okay. Any other questions for the development?
Well, how do we, how do we address John's suggestion about this part?
At the end, we have a couple people that have registered to speak, and so, before we can take any action, we have to let them speak, and then I'll read the names of those that have registered for against, and then we can take action, follow on all of that.
Because to address John's notion of the neighborhood meeting, that's actually required, if they're going back through the planning process, they have to go back through the whole process, and that's part of the.
My point is to, let's sort of have that before they go, and spend all the money on something that may or may not.
We're happy to do that.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we had one, two, three, four people that have registered to speak, again, just like the public hearing, please confine it to three minutes, and we'll start. Joseph Byrne, 2835 River Ridge Circle.
Is that on this table today, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that underneath?
Is it on?
Oh, okay. I'm Joe Byrne, and I'm a resident of Cottage Grove, in the town of, it sounds to me like you may be making a motion to table the rezoning tonight, is that?
That's what the developers indicated, they're okay with it.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't represent the, the residents or the neighbors that are here, but I've been working with the coalition to work on trying to make what we feel would be a better development here. And so, given the, you know, developments tonight, and at the planning commission, and Mrs. Schrod's offer to come back and redo the plot, we're going to reach out to, when I talked to John earlier today, we're willing to sit down at the table, at a meeting, and, you know, talk through our concerns, we do want to meet with Bob, or Mary and her husband, and try to, you know, express our concerns and work with everybody to give what we would believe is a, is a good, you know, working solution for the community. Most of the folks that are here tonight, you know, are concerned more about the community than, than just, you know, their own issues. I mean, the park is a classic example. I mean, the folks that are in Meadow Grove, or the folks on the west side, Mike Fonger and Mike Zolke, they're not going to access to Shady Grove, and Meadow Grove, there's no access. So, for the park, for our purposes, it's, it's sort of a non-issue from a town perspective. I think everybody's concerned about it more because it just doesn't, you know, at least, in our perception, it doesn't seem right to have that small of a park in a subdivision that, you know, may be isolated for five or 10 years, until Steve Fork develops his property, or Mike Zolke develops his property, there's no access into Meadow Grove, and Cottage Grove is on your side. So, it just doesn't seem like to have that small of a park in this subdivision, initially. So, it just doesn't seem like to have that small of a park in this subdivision initially, doesn't make sense. So, I think most folks are concerned about, you know, the community as a whole here. So, I just want to let you know that we're willing to work with developer and town, uh, builders to try to, you know, work on a resolution. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Mike Fungar? You can sit at the table or the podium, either one.
I like what I heard from John and Troy, and, you know, I am to the, to the west, and Mike Kozelki, myself, Charlie, who's sitting back here, my, my new neighbor in front of my house, Mike Boland, we're gonna be here a long time in the town. And, you know, a lot of the stuff we had, we had talked to at the planning commission meeting was in the report from Mr. Root there, and boy, I had tons of questions right away when I started reading the document, and especially about my property being considered for economic, for development for a housing area, and that what could be used for this development by adding, by looking at my property and saying, well, we can do it in this little development because it's gonna be a bigger development someday, just didn't make any sense to me. And I think, I'm not sure, I think actually they sort of looked at that in a way, it seems like maybe that, that has been fixed with what is going on now. But, you know, we should have been at this situation a year ago, and now we're reinventing the wheel again, and there's, there's right reasons why it should be relooked at again, because it just was not a good plan. And I think the people in the town, they want to be involved, and there is, there's not a question that there's gonna be a development, not a question at all, but we're, we're also for the situation that we want this thing to be looking good twenty years from now, too. So it should be done right, and I think if you are gonna table this, it's the best, best thing to do.
Thank you. Jeff? Okay. Twenty-eight, fifty, Eldar Way.
I'm Jeff Trenton, I had a prepared speech tonight. This is the first time I feel we all have come together as Cottage Grove, not village, not town. Thank you for thinking about it, and I'm sure, thank you very kindly for taking that message back as well, appreciate it.
One other person registered to speak, palavated by mispronoun, Ben Milchessky?
Yep.
Forty-three, sixty, and Secretary Court wishes to speak against.
So I previously spoke at the planning commission meeting and sent messages to several of you at the board and village staff and such. I'm very happy to hear that you guys are willing to come back and open this up to be a communal discussion, I think that's really the best option, uh, sorry, option at this point. I do want to highlight that I did review the park and open spaces survey, as well as the park and open spaces plan, and there was a very heavy emphasis that even surprised me on how important conservation parks and open spaces are to largely village residents, actually. Over eighty-one percent of those responses were from village residences, out of about a total of five hundred. Over ninety percent of the responses gave ratings of important or very important. And so if we follow that, and also as Mr. Proctor's also said in the past, that it's in, it's obviously in the developer's best interest to entice possible buyers. The people moving in there would also become village residences, residents, and likely have the same values, and I think it's therefore important to place an emphasis on that park and green space and make it a communal place. What else? I'm also having to drastically change what I thought I was gonna be talking about tonight, There also wasn't in the plan a projection that the village will need to add between thirty-two and sixty acres of active park space by 2035, in order to maintain the current ratio of twelve point eight acres per one thousand residents. I do have to say that as the plan currently stands, it, in my opinion, does not resonate well with the planned neighborhood heavily incorporated into the village comprehensive plan. Increasing the park size and trying to make it more centrally located, as well as taking advantage of the natural resources that are there, I think would greatly help bring that into alignment with both the comprehensive plan and the parks and open spaces plan. And as others have said, I think at this point, the best thing is to table it and have an open discussion about this, so that we can all get on the same page. You know, this is certainly the most positive discussion about this that I've seen so far. In retrospect, I have to say that I personally regret not being aware of the subject earlier. Going forward, I would certainly look forward to providing further input, given the opportunity.
I believe everybody else has registered not to speak, but just wanted to register for or against. If I come across one that wants to speak, we'll certainly do that.
Can I interrupt you there?
Sure.
Okay. I'll take up much of your time, because I appreciate the willingness to sit down and talk, but I did want to just...
You introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Frank Selby, I'm a town resident, I live on Damascus Trail.
Okay.
And I just, what scares me about the design as it currently stands with the small park, and the lack of access to Vilas Road, which would theoretically give access to the bigger park, is that I'm one of many families with small children that lives on Damascus Trail, which, in absence of a road that connects through from this subdivision, it's gonna mean another seventy or so families coming down Cottage Grove and cutting down Damascus Trail, then to get to Bakken Park or one of the bigger parks. And I don't know about your neighborhood, but when, when we see folks, especially from outside of our neighborhood, cutting through those streets, they're, they're not doing it at a slow speed, and I'm scared for my children and the other families with young children, who live on a, a small road without sidewalks, and, and the way we see the cars speeding down at this point in time is, is just scary. So, having a design that would allow folks from that neighborhood to access Vilas, to get at the bigger parks, without cutting through a road that really can't accommodate it, I think is, is safe. I love the trees, I want to see the trees as much as possible, too, but I also want to see my children both to be happy, so thank you.
This subdivision is not gonna go all the way through to Vilas, one way or the other.
No, there's an adjoining land on the south, so bus road couldn't go through completely, it would just go through this subdivision at this point. Okay. All right. Larry Schinaman, two oh five, Yellow Hill Drive, village resident, registers in favor. Tom Stidola, forty-three, sixty-nine, Citation Court, not village resident, registers against. Michelle Stidola, three oh five, Southern Grange Cottage Grove, village resident, registers against. Chad Ford, three oh five, Southern Grange Cottage Grove, village resident, registers against. Levon Stidola, not a village resident, registers against. And Sue Trenton, is Sue here? Okay, Sue, but Sue Trenton now is just registering against. At twenty-eight, fifty, Eldar Way, not village resident. Kathy Fairwell, twenty-eight, thirty-four, Eldar Way, not a village resident, registering against. Kevin Farwell, twenty-eight, thirty-four, Eldar Way, not a village resident, registering against. Phil Boltman, not a village resident, registering against, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, Eldar Way. Kurt Wilcox, twenty-seven, fifty-nine Cottage Grove Road, not a village resident, registering against. Donald Martenson, twenty-eight, forty-five, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Heather Martenson, not a village resident, registering against, also twenty-eight, forty-five, River Ridge Circle. Ruth Steiner, six twenty-two North Main Street, village resident, registering against. Palavated by mispronoun, Alvin Steiner, six twenty-two North Main Street Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Winnie Bade, B-A-D-E, three fifty Metal Crest, village resident, registering against. Jane Ring, forty-five, thirteen Bus Road, not a village resident, registering against. Dave Ring, same address, fifty, forty-five, thirteen, Ring, Bus Road Cottage Grove, registering against, not a village resident. Janice Hamilton, twenty-seven, ninety-three, Ruffian Circle Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Roger Hamilton, twenty-seven, ninety-three, Ruffian Circle Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Mike Stassi, eight thirteen Sunset Drive Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Cindy Stassi, eight thirteen Sunset Drive Cottage Grove Road, or Cottage Grove, sorry, Sunset Drive, village resident, registering against. Nicole Voliva, V-O-L-I-V-A, five oh four Progress Drive, village resident, registering against. Ann Byrne, twenty-eight, thirty-five, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Robert Voliva, five oh four Progress Drive, village resident, registering against. Pete Runhar, R-U-N-H-A-A-R, three oh three Aaron Court Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Rebecca Paim, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, Eldar Way, not a village resident, registering against. Bob Prem, twenty-eight, thirty-eight, Eldar Way, not a village resident, registering against. Phil Hatfield, twenty-eight, forty-eight, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Craig Hatfield, four hundred Metal Crest Trail, village resident, registering against. James Guy Jr., P.O. Box two oh six Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Carolyn Hatfield, twenty-eight, forty-eight, River Ridge Circle Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Amy Kurtna, four hundred Metal Crest Trail Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Sid Manthee, twenty-eight, forty-one, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Lynne Coffey, twenty-eight, forty-four, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Janet Masters, eight oh two Smithland Lane Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Steve Coogan, forty-four, fifteen Damascus Trail Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Brenda Coffey, twenty-eight, forty-four, River Ridge Circle, not a village resident, registering against. Mike, I'm sorry if I mispronounce this, it's hard to read, Michael Mel, M-E-L-L, M-E-I-L, thirty twenty Pheasant Run, village resident, registering against. Tomorrow Mel, I guess that's how you spell it, M-E-L-O, okay? Thirty fifty Pheasant Run Cottage Grove, village resident, registering against. Katie Majeski, forty-three, sixty-eight, Secretary Court Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Aaron Rembas, sixty-three, eight, sixty-three, eighty-four, West Main Street, village resident, registering against. Steve Rathard, nineteen sixty Circle, Circle High, not a village resident, registering against. Zenda Rembas, six thirty-eight, West Main Street, village resident, registering against. Wayne Rathard, six twelve West Lawn, village resident, registering against. Viola Rathard, six twelve West Lawn, village resident, registering against. Sharon Mercier, forty-eight, forty-three, thirty-eight Damascus Trail, not a village resident, registering against. Mark Richter, looks like, forty-three, fifty Vilas Road, not a village resident, registering against. Joanne Richter, forty-three, fifty Vilas Road, not village resident, registering against. Joan Peckman, four, forty-three, seventy-seven Citation Court, not a village resident, registering Gerard Peckman, forty-six, forty-three, seventy-seven Citation Court Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Max Brunner, twenty-eight, forty-four Eldar Way Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Claire Brunner, same address, twenty-eight, forty-four Eldar Way, not a village resident, registering against. And Charles Roberts, forty-three, sixty-four Vilas Road Cottage Grove, not a village resident, registering against. Thank you for your patience, that's everybody that is registered. At this point, then, it's open to discussion from the board. Any comments, questions? Heard the developer is willing to entertain a motion to table this and come back with a new revised plan at the subsequent meeting.
Jack, just from a procedural point of note, that we're closing the public hearing there.
This isn't a public...
Okay, my fault, my mistake.
Sorry, no problem.
Jack, just, the con, for the meeting that will be in the future, probably should invite the Parks and Rec Committee, because they were unanimous in their recommendations, and they're...
Sure.
Obviously very familiar with the village's park system. And then the Public Works Committee, they made the streets and traffic recommendations, along with devastated.
Okay. So at this point, I'll, I'll make a motion to table based on discussion with the developer, till they come back with a revised proposal, and invite Parks and Rec, Public Works, and anyone else.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. John, good guess.
I, I would just recommend that we have this citizen hearing, before we ask the developer to go back and redesign, because that's more time and money on their end, and I think if we just get everyone's, probably top three, we're not gonna please a hundred percent of the people.
Right.
But let's have the discussion, so the village board can actually get direction to the developers, so they're not recreating different plans that continuously are gonna get voiced concern against and shut down alter places.
Since this is a new proposal, I think Aaron said that a, that meeting is required, is that correct, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, so that meeting will be required because of the way our plan works? Because this is a new proposal that they'll be coming back with? If that makes sense?
So that occurs before or after they go back to the architecture firm, engineering?
Do you know what, what point that would occur, Aaron?
I mean, it could be either, it kind of depends what feedback you want, if you want to have something to respond to.
They would like it first, and I'd like to provide it to them first, because like I said, this has been going on for a year and a half, and either we're gonna do it or we're not, and I prefer we do it, and we do it the right way for all citizens involved.
Sure.
And it would be less money that they're putting up front for something that may or may not get approved.
But for Speed, it may be in your best interest to do some homework, because obviously...
We can draw on conceptualists.
Yeah. With an overlay of the trees, I thought I've seen that before, I don't know, if you've had that part, I mean, the overlay of the trees on the plot, too, is kind of helpful to know exactly where the woods would go, or, or where, where they wouldn't go, if you take it out.
Okay, so we have the motion and second, then to table contingent upon having the public meeting required under our planning ordinance, and the developer coming back with the new proposal. And any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Any extensions? Motion passes, thank you all for your patience.
Thank you.
We are down to Deer Grove EMS Commission, Troy, discussing Consider Pleasant Springs Fire and EMS Contract.
Yeah.
So we had our meeting Thursday, last Thursday, thirteenth. We see here, staff support calls, we're a little off from last year, down from last year for the month, we're still up for the year, nine hundred and nine versus about fifty-three. Volunteer hours, we're up twenty-one percent. The update on the emergency medical services contract at Pleasant Springs, it's been approved by Pleasant Springs and signed, it is out for both the town and village, Cottage Grove and the village of Deer Grove.
Okay, so we take, take five minutes and let them, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's hard to hear, because of the noise, give them five minutes.
I've got all night.
Okay.
I don't.
That's your problem.
Yeah.
So we're on break?
Yeah, we take five, you have to use the bathroom.
I would, so, so, it's, it's all, just seven shots, essentially. You know, everybody else, they're trying to get their glasses on.
Six sides, we're standing.
The village, yeah, yeah, that's it, well, although I, 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 I think it might get city stasi.
What's your seat?
Four.
Yeah.
I think they just certainly...
It should be, it's easy to do with their sides.
I wanna thank Melissa and her efforts in being on the committee and finding a, you know, we had really three, four good qualified candidates, and narrowed it down to him, and so we'll get him in here shortly after he starts.
He starts, you said, the second?
January second, yeah.
Okay.
It's good, because he's already involved in Deer Grove EMS too, so it's...
Yeah, so he is familiar with Deer Grove, as, like she said, as a volunteer and stuff. People already know who he is and stuff, so it's all right.
Good choice.
Our next meeting is on January seventeenth in Cottage Grove. So, and I guess back to the Pleasant Springs, so everything's been, been looked at by legal on the EMS side through, through their council, and everything appears to be okay with it, so...
And the town of Cottage Grove already approved the contract to Pleasant Springs?
Did they already approve it, or are they doing it tonight?
I thought that they had said that they...
It could very well be, yeah.
Maybe they're doing it tonight too.
Yeah, I think you're right, Melissa.
Deerfield doesn't meet again until next month.
Oh, okay.
So they aren't able to approve it before the first?
And, you know?
Or review it.
So, can I make a motion to approve the...
Has everybody looked at it, is it in your packet? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency medical services agreement with the town of Pleasant Springs.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Deer Grove EMS contract with town of Pleasant Springs. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. And here at the top of the list, we're reports from village officers too.
I, I guess on the same subject, the commission did wanna thank Chief Labor for doing a very thorough background check for us, for the individual, and it was greatly appreciated, so, thanks chief.
Anything else? No reports? Jane? Jane, Melissa?
No.
John?
Happy holidays, everybody.
All right, the only thing I have, and, and good thing Troy mentioned this, because I have a discuss and consider appointment to Deer Grove EMS, and I think it's you, John? John Russell? So at this point, I'll make a motion to appoint John Russell to the Deer Grove EMS Commission.
Second.
Motion and second to appoint John Russell to Deer Grove EMS. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Any motion passes?
And that's removing me then, right? Okay. We don't have four people on it.
Yeah. It could all show up, yeah. Attorney Leebushay, legal briefings.
I always like to talk about the legal briefs. Right now, we have several developers who we're working out agreements with, we have not heard anything back from Cory Ridge, we don't know what exactly is happening there, so I'll reach out to them before the end of the year for Aaron, and we'll see if we get any response. There are several contracts that are being looked at, and it's just kind of an end of the year cleanup.
Okay.
Matt?
Cynthia Clay, utility clerk, is retiring effective January fourth, so if you guys have a chance to stop in, congratulate her. Nineteen years with the village, it's a impressive tenure, and she's done a great job, and it's gonna be tough to fill the spot, so, yeah.
Aaron? No report? Chief Labor?
Nothing.
Anything, Mike?
Well, Gigi reported it, I just go over on the county park grant that came in, so it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Hundred eighty-two-five.
That's a lot, nice.
Is that for the bike trail or?
Yep, bike trail from...
Yep.
I got a couple of updates, make it official. Yeah, that's, you're notified Friday afternoon, we got the fifty percent matching for the trail, basically from well three out here, heading all the way out to the interstate.
Gigi, is that the one that has language that they said they would change, the, it's like that park leap?
Yeah, it's, there was certain hiring and privacy and things, yeah.
Yeah, we had worked that out with them before, so they will need it.
So there'll still be a gap between the well three and the clinic, right?
Oh, no, no, that's all part of it.
Okay.
I mean, some's gonna be filling in, some's gonna be crushing sidewalk that does exist there, and then, but, yeah, I think that's why it's worth a while, because there's a major connection now, you know? They have plans to be on T and TT and out to the county park, and we'll have our park done, anybody that's biking there will be able to get off road, come all the way down downtown.
Nice, nice.
Yep. We did not get the grant money for the Vilas Street crossing, but the pre-application thing, they got indicated that was possible.
We got the big one, though.
We got the big one, so that's okay.
Also, Conservancy Court Wetland Project, aside from some retainings for restoration issues we anticipate in the spring, I walked yesterday talking to the project manager from MSA, and it's complete. Everything looked good to me, there are a couple of concerned citizens, and actually, Jane from MSA set up meetings to just talk with them through the issues, I think people may have had a misunderstanding what a wetland project is versus what they maybe thought it was gonna be, so they're just gonna go out and meet and clarify with them, but, looks good.
Are we gonna take a peek at the other side of the streets?
That is, it's a whole different issue, but absolutely, we've been looking, and hopefully we have a slightly drier twenty nineteen, and we can...
Right now, it's totally filled in except, great, off, great off the road, great up.
Yep, that's already on my list for...
Who was on your list?
I've got a big list, but it's gotten smaller now, the roundabouts have been cleaned up. Donner's Lawn Service here in the village went out, and actually, just over a day, they threw a whole bunch of guys at it, and, and, I mean, they look good. They trimmed up the trees, and now we can really, board and everybody in the village can take a look in the spring and see what they, what, what we wanna do, I guess, moving forward.
Thank you. There's a lot of good positive feedback on social media and front files, so...
I've gotten a few calls even, just to say, yep, they did a great job.
Jane, before you run out, the hundred and fifty K, we have, is that within a certain period of time, or, because obviously it's caused by planning and everything else, we've gotta come up with our app.
Yep.
Is there expiration date on that grant?
There is. I can't recall off the top of my head, can I get back to you? It wasn't, but I mean, we had, the plan for us was to do it twenty nineteen, it's, it's TID project plan, so our portion was already in the TID. So, hopefully, we're planning, we'll get it done.
Okay, I was just curious to let everybody know, I, I remember that it was a planned by them, making sure...
I can't remember the exact timing on that, just because I do believe we're gonna get it done in twenty nineteen.
Will you send over whatever it is that we gotta take a look at, so we can make those changes right away?
I...
Or did they already do it?
No.
They just kinda, they, they said they'll be okay, but we just have to make them again?
Say a lot of...
Yep, absolutely.
We still gotta look at the other tape.
Yep. Thank you.
John, anything? Parks and Rec?
Would like to thank, once again, Hamburg Construction and MSA for donation of time and materials for the project at North Lawn. We did some recreating back there, as we talked about at the last vote meeting, so Hamburg showed up with five volunteers and a couple of machines, and they knocked it out in less than four hours. So thank you to them.
All right. Do you say anything?
Yes. So just a reminder that non-candidacies are due by December twenty-first at five P.M., so if you can, we have received one from Jeff.
Yep.
And so that has prompted a question, as well as if you want those posted on the website when they come in, or do you want them all posted on the twenty-first?
Maybe post them all on one, I don't care, whatever, I guess, it doesn't matter.
You mean if somebody else declares they are?
Right, so that it's noticed to the public, so if anybody wants to file papers, they can.
I would recommend that we post everything on January second, or the day after, whenever the people, the people wanna run, they should run, versus wait.
The non-candidacy is due on the twenty-third of December.
Yep. The only thing I would add, in a larger, larger city, which we're not, but larger cities, when anyone announces, you know, paper picks it up right away. So, that was why we're thinking, we could just, if we get, when and if we get them, we can just put them right on the website, or we can wait, you know? So we're just gonna wait for...
Maybe that's easier, then, if you got multiple around one at the same time.
I don't have?
All right, and Deb is here, so...
Absolutely excused.
I don't blame her.
She's a Mexican, I'm a little concerned about all of your so-called stories.
They will. Communication and miscellaneous business, consider approval of voters, any questions unvoiced?
I question, master key for Village Hall, it was one loss, or we just needed an extra one?
Needed, needed extra ones. For the cable set. Oh.
What's the twenty eighteen blanket crime bond?
What, what page?
Page two, from Bear Insurance or...
Blanket crime bonds?
Yeah.
I guess we had, we can, we can get back to you guys on that?
Yes, Deb would be the one to call.
Yeah, okay.
Let's call her.
The roundabout cleanup was seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's pretty, thank you.
Yes.
Is that, is that off the...
What's the form?
Yeah, TID. Then, so the League of Wisconsin Municipalities membership dues, what, what's all included with the membership?
For League of Municipalities, I guess I'll let the answer, that as far as the membership with municipality league?
They lobby on our behalf.
Okay.
They put on the train, right in the mail once in a while.
For new trustees or elected officials?
Five years, just so they ask me to speak for free. But they're the contact point for all, for villages and cities, and they have two people on their legal staff, and you can call, well, the attorney, or the village president can call, and they just try to sort of help that way, and they're a great resource. And a lot of times, if you go on, if you just go on the website, and around a little bit, there'll be frequently asked questions, and those are, those are really helpful and really informative. And they allow us to put free postings for jobs and things like that on there, anyone that's looking for municipal work, that's a common place to look, so...
Okay.
Make the motion to approve vouchers?
Okay. Motion and second to approve vouchers, that's presented, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondence, I have nothing official, anybody else? Okay. Upcoming community events? I don't think we have anything on... All right, future agenda items, anybody? I'm assuming without, probably the next board meeting before we have that meeting with the developer, right? I don't know, maybe...
I mean, do we wanna have that during this session, or do we just wanna have like an informal?
I would think it should be informal, but...
I mean, we still have posted, because I would imagine it's a bit formal there, but... I personally prefer to, prefer it to be less formal than a board meeting.
Yeah.
So it actually has a back and forth dialogue, versus, you know, three minutes, papers back and forth.
Right.
Well, since Parks Committee should be there, and Public Works Committee should be there, you know, like a committee meeting, perhaps?
You just have to post a forum for the committees, but that is...
How, how would you recommend that we go about coordinating that? Does Aaron or Matt wanna get with Mr. Crocker and the developer, and maybe select two or three dates? I would recommend, against having multiple iterations, just pick the date that works best for everyone, because you'll get people at one meeting, and then you'll get the opposite at, you know, you may have a meeting at the next one, so just pick one date, if it works for them.
See what they want from there, how long that's gonna take, and we'll have to take the holidays into consideration.
Sure, yeah.
So you or Matt wanna be able to lead us coordinating that, and just let us know?
And the committee members have to, let them know what's good work.
Yeah. And also explain to them what this is.
Right.
So they have an idea of...
Yeah, so they don't think it's just a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
Jack, you sent, Lee and I have emailed asking for a future agenda item. Updating our ordinance, it's part of the zoning code to be consistently stated statute in regard to protest petitions, Lee, what's the...
Right, the protest petitions, and when they pass, this is all part, part of that act, it's a four eighty-three year, there were, there were a series of items that were passed by the legislature with the intent to make things easier, I think, for developers to develop, and, and they put some restrictions on municipalities from stopping that development, and one of the things that they did was to delete from chapter sixty-two, the protest petition. Now, we still have the protest petition in our code, and there's some arguing going around, just because lawyers like to argue, that, you know, they should have also gotten rid of the, just said that if, if there's anything like this in ordinances, municipal ordinances, then that should go too, but that was not passed by the legislature, so it's up to the individual community to decide whether they want to keep that or not.
And as is the case with so many ordinances, until you have something come up, you don't realize the ordinance doesn't comply, and just as a general rule, like we changed another ordinance earlier, tonight with tree overhangs or whatever, I mean, you just gotta get them compliant with state statutes regardless of the subject, is my goal for that, but if it wasn't for this, I wouldn't have known this wasn't compliant.
Well, I'm not sure that I would necessarily say it's not a compliance, it's just that now there's a, there's an option, I think.
Right.
And I'm, I'm sure that this is gonna get litigated.
Sure.
Because everything gets litigated. But I do think that there are communities that are gonna say, well, that's what the state did, to be consistent, we should also get rid of it, and there'll be others who say, no, we don't wanna do that, so, that, if that's on for the next agenda, I'll give you the background. I also contacted the Legislative Reference Bureau and asked them for the drafting notes, everything that gets drafted, there's, there's notes by the drafter, you know, who said what, who wanted this, who's, and it's, it's really informative, so I'll make sure you have all that information, that you can decide what you wanna do.
So this could be as simple as discuss and consider adopting state statute, whatever?
Well, it'd be as simple as discuss and consider repealing that section of the...
Ordinance.
Of the ordinance, because it's already out of the state statutes, or it's out of the state statutes as of December thirty-first at midnight, so when you're doing your celebrating, you can say, you also know that the protest petition is coming.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda?
Any chance we can get Cynthia here, and maybe recognize her for the nineteen years? I don't know if, you know, if we can give her a plaque, or if...
It'd be nice to surprise her, but I think if we call her to a meeting, that won't happen, but it'd be nice to recognize her somehow, so...
She would probably say that I just did. I, I don't know that she'd come.
Yeah, it'd be embarrassing for her, but not, not in a bad way, just...
No, I, I think we'll, yeah, we're, we'll have a schedule, like an open house, where, you know, staff will bring a ditch to pass and things like that, and we can let everyone know when that is.
Yeah, yeah, please do. Good.
Yeah.
Anything else, future agenda?
give you the background, I also contacted the Legislative Reference Bureau and asked them for the drafting notes, everything that gets drafted, there's, there's notes by the drafter, you know, who said what, who wanted this, who's, and it's, it's really informative, so I'll make sure you have all that information, that you can decide what you wanna do.
So this can be as simple as discuss and consider adopting state statute, whatever?
Well, it'd be as simple as discuss and consider repealing that section of the...
Ordinance.
Of the ordinance, because it's already out of the state statutes, or it's out of the state statutes as of December 31st at midnight, so when you're doing your celebrating, you can say, you also know that the protest petition's coming.
Okay, anything else for future agenda?
Any chance we can get Cynthia here, and maybe recognize her for the 19 years, and I don't know, you know, if we can give her a plaque, or if...
It'd be nice to surprise her, but I think if we call her to a meeting, that won't happen, but it'd be nice to recognize her somehow, in some fashion.
She would probably say that I just did. I, I don't know that she'd come.
Yeah, it'd be embarrassing for her, but not, not in a bad way, just...
No, I think we'll, yeah, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have a schedule, like an open house, where, you know, staff will bring a ditch to pass and things like that, and we can let everyone know when that is.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Good. Anything else, future agenda?
When is the next meeting, the 7th of January?
Yes.
Yep, oh, yeah, 7th of January, that's 18 calendar, yeah, okay. All right, at this point, I will make a motion that the village of Cottage Grove enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, par. 1, par. 1, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is to discuss boundary agreements, and the village of Cottage Grove Village Board also entered into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 1985, par. 1, par. 1, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, administrator's evaluation, or second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, we're going to close session, we'll need a roll call vote.
Alan?
Aye.
Almore?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
William?
Aye. Okay, closed session, first one, I guess, is boundary agreements.